Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting the order today for our May 11, 2023 Board Meeting. Welcome everybody here today that's in the courtroom and everybody that's in the virtual One statement I want to read here before we get started. I have received a request from Mr. Ronnie Jett to participate in the meeting tonight by electronic communications from a remote location due to his personal medical condition. I have approved such participation under the county's adopted remote participation policy and ask the Board of Supervisors ratify this decision to allow Mr. Jett to participate remotely.
I still move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to second. Any other discussion?
This is authorized by code, providing we have a policy which we agree with.
Yes, it is. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jett, are you online and can you hear us?
Can you hear me, Richard?
Yes, I can hear you, Ronnie.
Okay, good enough, I got you.
All right, glad to have you here today.
Thank you all.
All right. All right, our first item on our agenda is the invocation, and we have passed to Corey Kiss.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes, sir.
If you please join me in prayer as I offer the invocation. Gracious God, as we gather in this place this afternoon, residents and leaders of this land are pleasantly living here in the Lord and that we are grateful for your presence amongst us. I pray that you would impart your guidance and wisdom to each person in this place, and as the business of this community is being discussed, may all be conducted peacefully and in harmony. We thank you for this board and the willingness of each of its members to serve our community, and as they make decisions on our behalf, grant them clarity of mind and of purpose and of speech, so that they can make informed and thoughtful decisions for the betterment of our community. May they hold before them the interests of the people they serve. And as we are about to speak of one nation under God, just a few moments, may we recognize the incredible privilege of living in this country of abundance and prosperity and possibilities. May we never forget nor take for granted the sacrifices of those who have made it all possible for us to enjoy what this country has to offer to us. And those of us who love you, oh God, may we bring honor to your name through our speech as well as our actions. May we love our neighbors as we love ourselves, for the sake of the one who loved us, died for us, and who is alive today, your son, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, next is the Pledge of Leitens. Goffield Parker, was you leading the pledge of leitens?
That's the allegiance of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our next item is the approval of the agenda. Do you have any additions or deletions to it? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve all the agendas, excuse me. Second.
All right, I have a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next is approval of the minutes. We have minutes from April the 13th, 2023, April the 19th, 2023, and May the 2nd, 2023. Any additions or changes to those minutes?
I move that we approve all the minutes.
All right.
Second.
Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain for approving these, being I was not present last time.
All right, Mr. Jett, that is fine. Thank you, sir. All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Jett's going to abstain. All right, next would be our presentations. We have a proclamation for National Safe Boating Week. Mr. Basie?
During National Safe Boating Week, May 20th through May 26th this year, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly eighty percent, eighty-six percent of boating fatalities. Through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas in 2022, seventeen people died and thirty-nine were significantly injured on Virginia waters, whereas each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., almost ninety-four percent of fatalities are caused by drowning, whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors, and whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Therefore, the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 20th through 26th, 2023 as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. It would in the thereof urge all those who vote to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating.
All right, it's a pleasure of the board.
I move we approve the resolution. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Jett. Anybody here today to receive this from National Safe Boating? All right. All right, next is the resolution for EMS Week. Mr. Basie?
A resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Northumberland County, Virginia, recognizing the important contributions made to the well-being and safety of the county citizens by emergency service personnel, and establishing the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2023 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Northumberland County. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience suddenness, illness, or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, and therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Northumberland County, Virginia hereby commands all emergency services personnel who serve this county for their dedication to the safety, health, and well-being of all county citizens, and be it further resolved that the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023 shall be observed throughout the county as Emergency Medical Services Appreciation Week, with this year's theme being Where Emergency Care Begins.
Move that we approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
The theme of this year's EMS Week is Where Emergency Care Begins. With yourselves as the emergency, medical emergency workers, it begins with you. You are dispatched, you receive, you recognize what's going on to the extent you can, you treat them to the extent you can, and you get them to the appropriate hospital or call for necessary helicopters. But again, it begins with you, and a lot of times the public kind of forgets that and wants to go to the hospital by themselves. Sometimes that can make it worse. You may have a heart attack, could be having a stroke, that could make your life worse off either by death or any kind of disability. So 911 gets the sheriff's office, who then can send the appropriate emergency medical workers. It's all part of the system. So I commend each of you who do it, whether career or volunteer, as the resolution states, it takes many hours to maintain your certifications, and it's nothing that took you a while, one, to get it and then to keep it. So I commend you all for what you do. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Tomlin, you're a hundred percent right. Without these wonderful people, we would, we wouldn't be doing very good. All right, I see we have a lot of EMS people here today. Anyone from Calio here? Come on, everyone from Calio, come on up, please.
I don't see anybody.
Nobody from Calio, all right. Mid-County.
You don't need to vote. It's like they had a motion.
Yeah. All right. We have a motion on the floor, and I messed up and didn't say anything, but all those in favor of this say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tomlin.
I'm not mid-County now. No, you started down this road a long time ago.
All right. Judge Chase, who gets this?
For Reggie White.
I'll get this. Like, thank y'all very much for everything that you do. Pretty help to me, my mom, and everybody else you have too, so it is, but had to be seen this way.
Vertical as opposed to horizontal. Yeah.
All right, well, thank y'all. All right, we got Northumberland. Since everybody get seated.
I'm on AC. I guess.
You got some eye, AC.
All right. To you, and thank you very much for all your service and hope you're well seen. The next one will be with the Northumberland County Rescue Squad. Mr. Bottles, anybody else here? I'd like to thank y'all for your service here, sir. Next one, let's see. Resolution for Teacher Appreciation Week. Mr. Basie?
Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our county's future depends on providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating
Mr. Basie?
the children of this community, and therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Whereas public servants give tireless efforts every single day to serve Americans Board of Supervisors proclaims May 8th through 12th, 2023 to be Teacher Appreciation Week, at many levels of government, whereas public servants in Northumberland County include and be it further resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors strongly local, state, and federal government employees from varied professions, whereas public encourages all members of our community to join by personally expressing appreciation employees take not only jobs but solemn oaths, whereas day in and day out, they continue to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Basie.
to fulfill their duties by providing the diverse services demanded by the American people
Move that we approve.
of their government with efficiency and integrity, and whereas without these public servants
All right, I got a motion to have, got a second. Any other discussion?
at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone here?
leaders and elected officials, and therefore be it resolved that Northumberland County
Oh, yeah.
Any teachers or that want to accept this?
Board of Supervisors do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set hereto
Everyone come forward, please.
that May 7th through 13th, 2023 is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government servants within Northumberland County, Virginia.
Move that we approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, our public servants, the ones who sometimes are behind the scenes, they have a thankless job, and they sometimes get a lot more grief than they're entitled to. That's the two of us, two behind, and the ones over here on the, my right, your left. Y'all have a tremendous responsibility that you don't get the credit for. We appreciate you, one, I appreciate you, and so I just want to make sure this is not a pro forma resolution, in my opinion. You're to be recognized and thanked.
All right. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who wants to accept this today? Everyone want to come forward?
I would just get all county and state or federal voice in the room.
Yeah?
Who've not previously been recognized.
Robert.
Come on, man. Rob?
Yeah.
I'd like to thank everyone that does our public service. I hope you want the job, you don't usually have it in your stead of it, and that's not good when it is, but we appreciate you very much. Thank you. All right, our next item on the list is Davenport Emergency Radio Funding Options. Anyone here representing? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, nice to see you all this evening. I'll see if I can get the mic kind of arranged here. Can anybody hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's nice to see everyone getting Kyle Louts of Davenport, county's relatively longtime financial advisor. It's been a while since we've seen you in person, so we appreciate the time this evening. Actually, I have two handouts, Mr. Chairman. I think you have both of those.
Yes, we do.
And I'd like, if it's okay with you, we'll start with, and I think they're both important topics, we'll try and keep it moving along, I'll start with the one labeled New Fund Balance Policy Recommendations, if that's acceptable to you and county administrator, et cetera. So I think, again, knowing that you are in the midst of going through your budget process, and you've got some good news in here that I think you're aware of, but want to make sure that you get some kudos for that as a board and as a county, and give a couple thoughts there, and then we'll give you a little update on the radio financing, if that's all right.
Yes, sir.
So again, I'm looking on page number one here, I won't read it word for word, but just again, a little bit of background, you may recall in mid-December of last year, it's been a couple months, but one of the rating agencies that rates Northumberland County, so there's a couple major bond rating agencies, all independent out of New York, that provide credit ratings to states and local governments all across the country, we have a rating with one of those, it's called Moody's Investors Service. So Moody's, we'll just use that name for short, kind of went through an update of their process of their credit rating, which again, a credit rating is very analogous to in personal finance, maybe think about your credit score, the higher the credit score, the lower the interest rate if you get a mortgage or a car loan or things of that variety, same concept here with credit ratings for the county. And so our good news to talk about publicly is that your credit rating was upgraded by virtue of that Moody's review. So kudos to you as a board and a county, we'll talk about why that is, but it is a big positive, something I know you've been working on here for a number of years in terms of getting that profile up on the financial side, so congratulations to you, and just want to make sure we said that publicly. So again, that credit rating serves as a, we'll call it a barometer for both the financial, the economic, demographic, and the management. So what that really means is when these rating agencies are looking at these credit ratings, they're not just looking at the numbers, they're not just looking at what our revenues and expenditures are, what our reserves are, but they're really looking at how do we run the county, same as Westmoreland County, same as all your neighbors, they're doing that kind of an assessment. It goes a little bit deeper than just, hey, what are the various revenues and expenditures? They really want to understand what is the management process, what's the philosophy, if you will, what policies are being sort of adopted and adhered to by the board. So I give you all that as a little bit of background. Next page, on page number two, we'll just give you some history in terms of that credit rating. Again, a bunch of sort of numbers and data here, but when the county first obtained a credit rating, it's back in 2006, it was with school financings, we were in this blue kind of oval here, it's called an A1, very solid at the time, it's a strong credit rating, that's their terms, not necessarily ours, but we started at a strong credit rating. We were then upgraded to a double A2 a couple years later, so upgraded a bunch, multiple notches there, all the way up to double A2. What transpired in the 2015-2016 time period, and you may recall this, is that rating was actually downgraded about five, seven years ago, not recently, five, seven years ago. We'll talk about why that was. And so what we've been able to do, when I say we, meaning you really as a county, have been able to demonstrate and prove to this rating agency that we are stronger today financially than we were back in the 2015-2016 time periods. We're pleased to report that we're back at that double A2 level, and that has a direct correlation on the second sort of presentation we'll talk about, which is radio financing, because it's a, it's a signal and a measurement to lenders that gives them comfort to lend the county money at the lowest interest rate possible. So having this credit rating be higher and stronger ends up saving the county money when it comes time to finance new projects. So again, part of the reason we wanted to bring this forward to you tonight is we think it's important to kind of link these things together. I'll flip the page to page number three, the full Moody's report, so everything that they published and said in their full official reports back here in the appendix, I'll let y'all read that afterwards, it's a public document that's available, it's out there, it's relatively lengthy, so won't go through that in detail, but what I wanted to show you on page number three, just to give a little perspective of what they look at and tend to care about in sort of summary here. And so we've got two little sections. The green section is what they say, factors that could lead to an upgrade. So basically, what could we be doing as a county to make that credit rating that was just upgraded, make it even stronger? And you see two things there, they say significant increases in reserves and liquidity. So basically, we're going to talk about the next couple pages, fund balance, reserves, how important that is, first and foremost, that's the first thing they list. The second thing they say is material decreases in long-term liabilities, that tends to come over time, as your tax base grows, as the county grows, et cetera, et cetera, sort of the size of those liabilities, those debt obligations, relative to the size of the county tends to shrink. So I think we really wanted to focus on that first one there, which is a positive, could lead to further upgrades in the future, and that's increases in our reserves and liquidity. So we'll do the flip side, and get the pros and the cons here, that red, they say factors that could lead to a downgrade. First thing they list is sustained declines in the financial position, so it's kind of a fancy way of saying if we're not able to demonstrate that our revenues cover our expenditures fully, if we demonstrate a trend of decreasing fund balances, so those are things that is kind of red flags to the agencies that again, could lead to a downgrade. Not saying that's happening in the short run here, we just got upgraded, but just, you know, in sort of full transparency, make sure we sort of talk about both sides of the equation. And then secondly, they talk about deterioration of local economy, income or wealth, those are things that are not necessarily within our day-to-day control, but they're things they look at, it's important, what's our assessed value doing, what's our unemployment rate, that all kind of gets baked into the cake in terms of the credit rating, but those are the things that are not as much within your day-to-day control as a board. So we'll flip the page and go to page four, just a little more background, I won't read this word for word, but certainly kudos to the county, you've done great things over the last five to seven years to kind of earn that, that credit rating. There's a number of things in that rating process that aren't within your control, so we're going to focus on the things that are within your control. Arguably, the most important of those is fund balance. So we got a couple bullet points there that just talk about how important it is, I won't read them to you, but that is one of the themes tonight, is how important the county's fund balance is, not just to the operations of the county, but as an external signal to lenders, to rating agencies about our financial strength. So that takes us to page number five. And on page five, if you're looking at that, so this is simply the general funds unassigned fund balance, so it's kind of the governmental accounting terms for what is our, is our savings account, what is our rainy day fund, sort of a combination thereof, and what has that trend been over the last six or seven fiscal years? We purposely showed here back to 2016, that's kind of, we got to our low point there in terms of fund balance, and we kind of got dinged that way by the rating agencies, and what you've really exhibited since then, that was a major component of sort of what you're able to show to this Moody's rating agency, is a very continued and steady trend of increasing that fund balance, to those rainy day reserves. All this information right out of your audit, you basically see where you ended in 2022, you know, effectively about three times where you were back in 2015, 2016, kind of rough math there, but in that range. So if you flip the page, one more page, we've taken that same information, what is our unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, and we've compared it to the size of our budget, and this is really the measurement that matters to the agencies, because it's sort of a the last five to seven years to kind of earn that credit rating. There's a number of things in that rating process that aren't within your control, so we're going to focus on the things that are within your control. Arguably, the most important of those is fund balance. So we've got a couple of bullet points there that just talk about how important it is, I won't read them to you, but that is one of the themes tonight, is how important the county's fund balance is, not just to the operations of the county, but as an external signal to lenders, to rating agencies about our financial strength. So that takes us to page number five. And on page five, if you're looking at that, so this is simply the general funds unassigned fund balance. So it's kind of the governmental accounting terms for what is our savings account, what is our rainy day fund, sort of a combination thereof, and what has that trend been over the last six or seven fiscal years? We purposely showed here back to 2016, that's kind of where we got to our low point there in terms of fund balance, and we kind of got dinged that way by the rating agencies. And what you've really exhibited since then, that was a major component of sort of what you're able to show to this Moody's rating agency, is a very continued and steady trend of increasing that fund balance, to those rainy day reserves. All this information right out of your audit, you basically see where you ended in 2022, you know, effectively about three times where you were back in 2015-2016, kind of rough math there, but in that range. So if you flip the page, one more page, we've taken that same information, what is our unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, and we've compared it to the size of our budget, and this is really the measurement that matters to the agencies, because it sort of adjusts for the size of a local government, some are bigger, some are smaller, and so this unassigned fund balance versus expenditures adjusts for that across all the different sizes of local governments across the state, the region, and the country. And so you can see that percentage there, again, kind of working left to right, looking at you at the board, we were as low as 11.2% back in 2015-2016, and through all the good work you've done managing the budget, working your way through, with certainly been tough budget cycles, you're right now at about 25%. So that is a much, much stronger level, and we'll show you what that looks like compared to peers, you know, neighbors, and compared to others. But part of our presentation tonight is recommend to you that you memorialize a policy that many of your, I would argue, most of your peers have, that that fund balance policy, you've seen that fund balance level, isn't going to drop back down below a certain level, we'll talk about that in a couple of pages. So if you flip the page to page number seven, we call this a cash flow summary, but this is really working very closely with the treasurer, which she was very good about sharing information, and we appreciate. One of the reasons that fund balance is so, so important in Northumberland County is you collect your real estate taxes once a year, and so that's analogous in your personal life, if you've got the majority of your income from your job, whatever it is, one time a year, and then kind of had to work your way through the rest of the year and manage and budget, you know, day-to-day, week-to-week in that manner. And so what this graph is showing you is those cycles on a monthly basis, and you can see when you collect the revenues, you're at a high point in around that December-January time period, and then you really end up managing your way as best you can through, when you get into that summertime, into the fall, the cash flows get very, very low. You've done a good job as a county not having to rely on some of the what we call TANs and RANs, or tax anticipation notes and revenue anticipation notes, and that's really what with some counties, when you get to those very low periods in and around September, so that graph kind of bottoms out there at the bottom, some of those revenue anticipation notes, the cash flow borrowing, been able to avoid those for a couple of years, saves you money, you're not having to pay somebody else to kind of make it through those low periods. But certainly, you're in this cycle cash flow-wise, and so part of our message tonight is we really want to try and keep you as strong as you can be from the cash flow and liquidity standpoint, and avoid having to do some of that interim financing or cash flow borrowing during the year, because it really is just going to be a money saver if you're able to avoid that. Page number eight, again, we know what sort of our situation here is in Northumberland, but wanted to give you a sense of what your peers and neighbors across the region look like. And so this is that unassigned fund balance versus expenditures policy, sort of measurement there, that ratio of fund balance to expenditures, and you see where we are right now, at about 25-26%, top of the page there, the median, think about it another way, the average of all these local governments below is about 25%. So we're right there in line with where everybody else is in our neighborhood, so to speak, if we have that 25% policy. And certainly, there's some, King and Queen, Middlesex, Northampton, they're substantially above that, 45%, 30%, et cetera, and there's some that are a little bit on the lower side, York, much, much larger county, they have other pockets of dollars too, Akamak also has other pockets of dollars. And so again, all of this, just to kind of give you a sense and a perspective, which we think is important, not just how are we doing things in Northumberland, but how are our peers doing it, and we're basically right at the peer average, at that fund balance And so as you flip over to page nine, we have a couple of recommendations for you. And again, the idea here is to memorialize the strength that you've been able to exhibit to the rating agencies over the last several years, make sure you kind of put a floor underneath that, a support underneath it. And so our first recommendation is to put in place a policy that says that unassigned fund balance will be maintained at least at 20% each year. That is a policy that's pretty typical for most local governments to have, many, I would argue, most of your peers have something very, very similar, it's measured at the end of the year, so it's not something whereby you've got to have that each and every week, that's not realistic, just given your cash flow cycle, but the idea is at the end of the fiscal year, you'd be at that 20% level, which again, you're right now at 25%. So you've got a little bit of called margin for error and leeway relative to that 20% In addition to that, the thought is, again, you've been able to run surpluses the last several years, which is a very good thing, and so to the extent you're able to continue doing that, the second thought, the bottom of the page here, is we put in place a policy that says, to the extent we have a surplus at the end of the fiscal year, so June 30 is the end of the year, the auditors do their thing, they come in the fall and say, hey, we had X many revenues and Y many expenditures, the surplus is, pick a number, $500,000, somewhere in that range. The policy would be, we put 50% of that into what we're calling a budget stabilization fund. The idea with that budget stabilization fund is put some dollars aside, so that when we get a surprise during a fiscal year, which always tend to happen, it's kind of the way of the world nowadays, we're able to have some of those dollars already put away, so if you get a surprise, we had a bad storm that comes through with expenditures that we didn't budget for, something happens in the economy and revenues don't come in the way we want them, we have a separate pot of dollars that's available to help with some of those unforeseen expenditures. And again, something that would be funded at the end of the year, not on the front end of things, and so we want to offer that as a recommendation to you. So page number 10, maybe just gives you in a visual, the thought process in terms of how we might think about that in terms of a policy, the unassigned fund balance in that top bucket there, again, we're at 25, the recommendation is we put a policy in that says, let's not go below 20, give ourselves a little bit of wiggle room, but let's make sure we keep ourselves at least at 20. To the extent we're there, then we have a budget stabilization fund. That budget stabilization fund really serves as our first line of defense when we get surprises during the year, so we're able to kind of keep the unassigned fund balance separate, aside, and really protected. One other point I'll make that we don't necessarily have in the book this evening, but it's important, is given what interest rates have done over the last year and a half, and especially short-term interest rates, the other reason that you would want to think about keeping that very strong fund balance is that fund balance can make you money, and it is making you money right now. When we were talking maybe 18 months ago, you were probably earning pretty darn close to zero on the cash you have in the bank. Nowadays, even just in a state pool program, you can be earning about 5% on those fund balance dollars. And so having those dollars set aside, again, ends up being a money saver for you, and then it's producing revenue, it's helping to take some pressure off of other areas in the budget, which we know certainly there are other areas of pressure. So again, 20%, the unassigned, to the extent we're there, have this budget stabilization fund, gives us a little more flexibility, and then third, think about really trying to dedicate recurring dollars to cash funding capital projects. And so that is sort of our recommendation for you in terms of that fund balance policy, we know it's budget cycle, budget season, et cetera, you're kind of working through that right now. I would say, Mr. Chair and others, again, I've said this before, most of your peers have something like this, and given how much progress you've made as a county over the last five or seven years, we'd really recommend and hope you'd consider putting something like that in place, again, to make sure you keep on that great trajectory that you've been on the last seven or so years. So with that, I'll pause, any questions that Chair, members of the board have on that topic?
Any board members have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
What difference, if anything, from the investor groups, Moody whoever, if we were to go to twice-a-year billing? Because obviously, when you're doing annually, you have the cash flow problems, but if you're doing twice a year, you're not going to theoretically have it, you may even get a one-time boost. How do they view twice-a-year collections from an investment rating point of view?
Yeah, so they're going to view that, and I think you can go back and look at that one page, we kind of looked at the month-to-month.
Yeah, I saw that.
They're going to view that as giving you more financial flexibility, they care a lot about, that's kind of why they care about the fund balance, too. They care about how much flexibility do you have to deal with surprises, to deal with issues, whether it's economically or natural storms coming through, whatever it is. So they're going to view that positively, because you're going to have more steady cash flow throughout the year, you're not going to be potentially needing to do those RANs and TANs, and so they're going to view it very, very positively, having that sort of greater cash flow flexibility during the year.
And the budget stabilization fund, that's very similar to the state's rainy day fund, they have a fancy word for it, but similar to what they have.
Yeah, yeah, the idea is to have our unassigned fund balance be kind of the base of it, and really have it be sacrosanct. It's measured once at the end of the year, so it's not like we've got 20% all year, and you see on the chart, you probably have 20% at the end of the year, and then it's going to decline, come back up, et cetera, so that's just where in local government, everybody measures things in the fiscal year, June 30. So the idea is to have that be sacrosanct, if you will, but then you're always going to have surprises, you have tough budget years, et cetera, et cetera, so that budget stabilization fund gives you a little more flexibility to deal with things and not have to touch the 20%. So I think it's your long-winded answer is that is an analogous situation.
No further questions. All right, any other board members? Mr. Jett, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, Richard, my fingers ain't as fast as they used to be, but no, I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you. Staff, have any questions? All right, no more questions, I'll let you continue.
We appreciate it. And so I'll flip to the second book here, Mr. Chair, which is 2023 Radio Financing, and so again, kind of leading from one into the other, obviously, a credit rating, the higher that credit rating, one of the advantages of having a higher credit rating is it results in lower borrowing costs when we need to go finance something or borrow money. On page number one, you all know this, you've been working on a new E911 radio system, this is something that most of your peers across the state are kind of working through right now, so very similar to what others are, or sort of facing right now. And so what we've done on your behalf, again, as your financial advisor, is to go out and competitively bid financing for that radio system project, and that's a process we've gone through multiple times in the past, we bid it out competitively to banking institutions, that's local banks, regional banks, national banks, we get all those bids back in, and what we have for you tonight is the result of that bidding process, which will give you kind of a heads-up, are very favorable, and some recommended next steps. Page number two of the presentation, just to give you a little bit of perspective, I think you probably see a lot of this in the news in terms of interest rates and what the government's doing, et cetera, what this page is really showing is tax-exempt borrowing rates for local governments. So when we borrow as a county, we're able to borrow at tax-advantaged interest rates, that gives a lower interest rate from the lender. And so just wanted to give you a little perspective this evening, the graph on the right-hand side of the page over here is giving you a long-term, four years, where are we right now relative to that history, and what you see there is we're in a very favorable spot. We're not as low as we were during the couple of years around the pandemic here, whereby we're at essentially all-time low interest rates, but even though we're higher than those time periods, we're still in a very historically favorable spot, so we just wanted to kind of point that out, because we know those topics have been in the news a fair So page number three, so we bid this out to, again, banking institutions, everybody got to see the same thing, had the same shake, so to speak, at putting a proposal in, we asked for up to $5 million. We always ask for a little bit more than we think we need, different than if you've gotten a mortgage, maybe get approved a little bit more than you think you need and borrow less, so we expect that $5 million, will probably be less when all is said and done. We asked for it over a 12- or 15-year term, and so you see the results there in the middle of the page, three banks put a bid in, Bank of America, Capital One, and Webster Bank. Importantly, when we did the planning for this, you may recall back in October, when we were here kind of talking about some elements of this, we did all of that planning assuming a 5% borrowing rate. So again, just a little bit of perspective in that. You compare that to the rates at the bottom of the page, and we've circled them there on purpose, for a 12-year term, which is really the financing that we tend to like the most, we'll talk through this and see what questions you have. For a 12-year term, Bank of America came in at, I'm going to round a little bit, about a 318, it went out to a whole bunch more decimal points, but round about a 318, that's a fixed rate, the full term of a 12-year loan, with a full $5 million for that radio system. You can see the other bids behind them, Webster Bank was a 390, Capital One was a 429. So obviously, we're seeing, given what's happening in the world, a lot of movement in markets, and so having that stronger credit rating gave the right signal to Bank of America to sharpen the pencil when they put that bid in. We'd argue maybe our backup bid could be a 15-year from Capital One, it's a little bit longer time period, which means our payment is less, so a little bit less pressure on the budget, but we're giving up a lot in interest rate to go to that, and we'll show you what it looks like in terms of the payments, one versus the other. So on page number four, again, just a little bit more of a summary, we've talked about the interest rates, that's at the top of the page, but again, basically a 318 locked in for 12 years. The annual payments on the Bank of America would be about $510,000 a year, we've got more specific payments in here, but round numbers, about $510,000 a year, Capital One at the 15-year, even though it's a higher interest rate, it's over a longer time period, it's about $465,000 a year. So again, thinking about all of those, it's less than what we had talked about back in October, and so coming in better in terms of that cash flow side of things. Third little bullet point here in terms of prepayment, we always think this is important, want to make sure that you have the flexibility to refinance in the future for savings, maybe pay something off early, it's probably the second thing we look at after the interest rate. The Bank of America loan is prepayable on, or excuse me, in whole, any payment date after the first half of the term. So basically, it's a 12-year loan, we could pay that off with no penalty after the first six years, that's kind of the way that works. Credit approval at the bottom of the page, and we'll talk about this for a second, both of the proposals here, both meaning Bank of America and Capital One, they're subject to final credit approval, which is not unusual, we get these in, summarize them, we just got them in on Friday, kind of been working through some things with the bank and county attorney, et cetera, but they're both subject to final credit approval, don't have any reason to think we can't get to final credit approval, but really want to come brief you as a board, get your comfort level, blessing, et cetera, to continue moving, and then we could come back to you at a subsequent meeting for approval. Page number five, again, we've kind of alluded to this in words, but this just gives you a sense of what those annual payments are. Importantly, fiscal year 2024, we start with a little bit lower payment, kind of allow you to build into that, knowing we're in the midst of the budget cycle for '24, meaning FY '24, they'll start very soon, and then full principal and interest starts in fiscal year 2025, and it's set up very much like a mortgage, so on an annual basis, you have basically the same payment each and every year. And importantly, these are fairly substantially lower than what we talked about back in the So on page number six, in terms of recommendation and rationale, certainly, I didn't hear any questions that the board may have, and get any input, our recommendation is that Bank of America proposal, it's just that much lower in terms of interest rates, saves you about $900,000 over the life of the loan versus the Capital One type of proposal. Ultimately, that decision is obviously yours as a board. What we would be thinking- What we would be thinking about in terms of next steps, as we flip to page seven here, is with your, we'll call it with your blessing this evening, we could keep moving forward with Bank of America, it's not binding in any way. If something happens, we can back it at any point and not be at risk of any dollars. And so we would really be working over the balance of May into June, and thought process was, we'll probably be back to you at the June 8 meeting with documents that you could take action on in terms of formal approvals, working with bond counsel, working with the county attorney that could lock in, and we would know that would be our rate and that would be our financing over the course of the next month. One caveat, as we've been talking to the banks, we know with this radio project, and there's a regional kind of component to it, there's some things that are coming together. We've asked them to extend their rate hold. So for the moment, they're holding their rate until June 21st, which we asked them to do, knowing we had a June 8 meeting, give ourselves a little time after that. They've said they can hold that rate until July 21st, and it'd be just one basis point. So as we look at that 3.17, et cetera, it'd be 3.18, et cetera, and we'd have another month to kind of work through any documentation, et cetera. And so just kind of knowing a little bit about how the different pieces are put together, we think that makes a lot of sense, so we're not sort of up against the gun, so to speak, into that June timeframe, if we've got a couple of other pieces to put together, especially with the regional component, that's, as I understand, it's still being worked on. So one caveat I would offer to you as we move forward, and again, none of this is binding at this point, this just allows us to continue having those discussions, pulling some things together, so by the time we come back to you, we have the formal resolutions and documents and final numbers, et cetera, to share with you before you take any, you know, final action to approve things. And so with that, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll stop, I'll pause, see what questions you may have, happy to address those.
All right, any board members have any questions?
Not at this time.
Go ahead.
One basis point, what does that mean in dollars and cents? Based on this project?
Very small. I'd have to calculate, I could calculate it for you real quickly, but it's-
If you can give me a ballpark, I'd be happy right now.
Hang on.
I'm not asking for price, I just got to have an idea what that means.
Yeah, let me, should have known that, Mr. Tom.
I'm admittedly going to rely on my little calculator here for a second, so bear with me.
Shut up my head.
It's about $230 a year.
No problem. Compared to this figure, that's chunk change.
Next question is, what happens if the Fed, between now and any time it were finalized, what would that do to the rate?
So that's why we want to do that one basis point, because we're basically held and locked in. There's a couple nuances whereby if the real world really falls apart, and that's-
That's my next question.
Yeah, if the world really falls apart, they technically have a couple outs. We've never seen that historically, I shouldn't say never, but you're not at risk if they somehow can't get themselves to-
All right, my question is the world end, so to speak, what about a default on the federal debt ceiling? How would that impact, using your crystal ball, how would that impact us?
It shouldn't impact us.
Okay.
It shouldn't. But I would say if we're able to move a little faster as opposed to slower, in terms of getting things put together, and we can kind of get ourselves out to July 21st, but to your point, there's a lot of things we can't control. And so if we're able, you know, project's going to move forward, comfortable with the financing, better to kind of get it pulled together, so we're not sitting out there having to answer those questions in the future.
And so you would want preliminary selection of the winning bidder, which you recommend to be Bank of America?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yep. Any board members have any other questions? Mr. Jett, do you have any questions?
No, sir, thank you. Very nice presentation.
Yes, it was, very nice. Staff, have any questions? All right, no more questions. Very good presentation, sir.
But I got a motion.
Very good presentation.
But I have a motion.
You have a motion.
My motion is that we preliminary select Bank of America move forward on a 12-year term.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Do I have any other?
Are you sure, Derek?
Not yet.
Okay.
Do you need to say something?
No, not yet.
Soon as I see a puzzled look, my county attorney, I'm stopping.
All right. Motion second. Yeah, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone want to say anything else before we vote on this motion?
I think for those of us who listen to the radio, we need to move forward. This past week and a half has been, you get a, you can't even tell which tone it is sometimes, much less which EMS agency it is, much less knowing what the complaint might be. So we've got to move forward.
All right. Mr. Jett, you have any comments?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right, thank you. No other comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, and as none against, no one said nay.
That's right.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for all your work you've done.
Mr. Gregory has a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gregory.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my only question for Mr. Lauks is, should they take any action tonight to move forward on the fund balance policy, or can that wait to get the documents together, or just direct staff to prepare the documents with your cooperation, or?
I think that's really up to the chair and maybe county administrators, certainly you could, nothing negative about doing it, don't have to do it this evening, but entirely up to the county.
Thank you.
I personally like to prefer, nothing against the presentation, but to see we can use it as a real, on our budget, do a real world, this is what it means. Because right now, we got a proposal on our budget, but not final, so we know what 20% means, what the various things would mean, so we can look, blah, 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 blah.
Mr. Tom, to that point, I think that's a good idea. It's better to have a policy, while we think 20% is the right level, better to have a policy that you can kind of work with than to adopt a policy and somehow not be able to work with it. So call it like measure twice, cut once, kind of thing there. So we could, you know, we can put some more formal language together, I know you're working through your budget, et cetera, so I think that makes sense.
All right. So 20% would be a minimum that we should maintain.
Yeah. General, unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, unassigned, yeah.
That's correct.
As long as we maintain that 20%, doesn't make any difference if it goes up, it's even better, but-
There would go, hurts to go up, but then you go up too much, then you move over another line.
Yeah. And we found that out one time before.
Yeah, well, then they also had that wonderful stress factor, which was, it was designed to catch Petersburg, but they never caught him, because it was too late.
Yeah, and that is the state, yeah, that's a difference.
Because we were pulling money out of our fund, general fund balance, to do the sheriff's office, that's why our fund balance dropped, we were financing it straight up. I mean, the preference for everybody is, the rating agency is to borrow, 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 because that's how they make money, but we know that.
Yeah, there's a healthy balance in there.
The bird machine pay-as-you-go doesn't exist anymore in capital, in local government, so to speak, or state for that matter.
Yeah, and that's in fairness where that last element of the policy, to kind of take the year-end surplus, to the extent there is one, put a little budget stabilization, but then have some-
Would you give me a mic, Joe?
That pays you, yeah. So anyway, I digress, but I think you've made good points.
Thank you.
Mr. Jett, do you have any comments?
Calling somebody.
No, sir, just listening to the conversations and pretty much agree with it.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation, very, very informative and very helpful. All right, our next item on the list would be an update from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Todd Belandam?
Yes, sir. Hey, y'all. I'm standing tonight for David. For this part of the presentation, Mr. White will be at the public hearing presentation. Just a few things got going on. We've been in the towns, cleaning the curb and gutters and the sidewalks, something we hadn't done in the last couple of years, we were able to get that done this year, and just about finished. We've got a few more sidewalks in the village area to clean up, and we'll be done with that. Also repaired some sidewalks in the Waukamica and the Reedville area, put some, repaired some of those that were cracked up. Also, the pipe job, pipe replacement on Route 200 down by Meratica Church is starting. They've moved some equipment in this week and probably started some this afternoon, and will be work starting there tomorrow, replacing that pipe under the road that, it'll be jack and board, just like it was in Moon Glow. So hopefully, there won't be any disruptions to traffic in the area too much. Also, we'll be starting some site-distance mowing next week, and our mowing contractor will begin on June the 5th to start mowing the county and picking up trash. They've all done one trash pickup about a month ago, and they'll be picking up trash and cutting, starting, hopefully starting on secondaries and then going to primaries. Also, we got, our surface treatment has started with the tar and stone on the roads, on secondary roads. We've got a total of 56 roads this year that's being surface-treated, and also plans to, for paving, will be on Route 360 from Leon to the end of Reedville this year, through the town of Reedville. Other than that, just with the, with the amount of work ramping up, with the paving and the amount of surface treatment roads, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of road work going on this time of year, and traffic, traffic are increasing. We just celebrated the Work Zone Awareness Week a couple of weeks ago. It's a week set aside to memorialize all those workers that were killed in work zones. And that is something that started in the state of Virginia and is now celebrated in all 50 states, recognized in all 50 states. So just ask that, with all this work going on, that, you see our signs out there, I know it's a lot of times it's inconvenient, but just please watch out for our workers. Just this week, there's been two hit in the state. One was a contractor and one was a VDI worker, and the contractor was in Westmoreland County. And both of them were hit-and-run accidents, hit-and-run, they hit the people, hit the workers, and kept on going. So just ask that while we're out there, see these signs, please, please be aware of what's going on when you enter a work zone. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right. Mr. Long, you have anything?
Yes, Todd, I wanted to thank you for all the good work you do. You were taught by the best. Okay. There's a ditch on the Brownstone Road on the Waukamica side. As soon as you turn, water stands in that area, all right? So if you can check that, show it appreciated. Also, if you can check the water on Light Street in those ditches, check those things. Now, the other thing, Todd, is the rumble strips down by the library, all right? You know, if we had the ones like the ones on Good Luck Road, you know, the ones by the library, the average person's going to run right through them, don't even touch them.
While you mention that, I found a little bit of history on that, and I just want to let you know, traffic engineering is coming back to make those, make it a full strip, just like-
Right, right.
The rumble strips that I out there now, the reasoning behind that is for, what I'm being told is more or less for motorcycle safety, where a motorcycle can run through the middle, through the area that's not, doesn't have a rumble strip on it, is what that is put there, why that was put there like that.
Well, I-
They are coming back to, where I understand, they are coming back, it is in the plans, and it'll probably be done in the next week or two, where they're going to cover the two-foot piece in the middle and add three foot to the, between the, where it's at now, to the curb.
Okay, the other thing, why don't they put them on the other side? You know, you got some people, you got people that don't respect anything, you got some people that do, but they'll move to the other side.
Yeah, I think these will put up on the westbound lane, because that's where the, where we've had these accidents on the turn of coming into Heastville, where they've been running into their building.
Right.
They're running into the building, coming into that turn on the westbound side, so that's why they were, that's why they were just put up on that side, but-
Thank you, Todd.
Mr. Brand?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Tom?
I mentioned to Mr. Belandam also about the rumble strips, but as far as anybody going around those rumble strips, they're violating laws, that's a solid line, so if they're alert enough to avoid the rumble strips, they're alert enough not to run into the building.
Not to run into the building, yes, sir.
But I would say, they need to be across, like Mr. Long said, like they're on Good Luck Road, but also they need to be closer to the turn. Because you know, you can figure the angle, they have hit twice in the same spot, and most people, as I've told you, think, when they see that rumble, they think it's for the slow-down speed sign. I also talked to Mr. Belandam about the pipe thing, after the past few rains we've had, that hole on the other side has gotten worse, and Mr. Belandam said the same contractor was supposed to take care of the other, because that hole has gotten right bad. You can see some trees start to pull away, and we had a squad meeting last night, and I advised their members, if nobody's coming and you have no qualms, but go over the sunline to get away from that, because it is, it's no longer where y'all have done the, you know, patching it, it's now a hole that beat down the side.
Yeah, they should be addressing that this week.
And last thing, I do want to commend your workers for what you did in Waukamica Church as far as the curb and guttering, that's nice, good and clean.
Thank you.
That one little spot I mentioned to you, but-
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Jett, you have anything?
No, I'm good, Richard, thank you.
All right, Todd, thank you for all the good work y'all do.
Thank you.
B-Dot one. You're in my line.
All right, next on the list is an update from Northumberland County Schools. Dr. Wargo?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and supervisors. First, I'll provide updates from the week, and I'll start on page one. Thank you for recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, and thank you to Mr. Dickens for representing this evening. We provided you with some pictures from some of the special events we did. In addition, last Friday was School Division School Lunch Heroes Day, so we recognized our school nutrition teams at the elementary kitchen, as well as the shared middle and high school kitchens. We also held School Nurse Appreciation Day this past Wednesday. And on page two and three, last Saturday, we held the Northumberland High School Prom, and that was at Minoken Farm. The theme was Masquerade Ball, and it was quite a success, the venue was very charming. One of the first times we went outside of Northumberland County for the prom, and it was just a really nice event for our students. And then on page three, you can see that this past Tuesday, we held the fourth-grade spring choral concert, and that was very nice and very well attended by our families. On page four, you'll see different senior nights that were held this past week. On the left, you have the NHS softball senior night, in the middle, NHS baseball senior night, as well as on the right, the boys soccer senior night. Our students in all of our buildings continue to participate in SOL testing, which pretty much goes through all of the weeks in May. And then if you look at the very end of this package that I've prepared for you, you can see some other school-specific updates, for example- For example, on page 13, you'll see that tomorrow our seniors are doing their senior trip to Busch Gardens. On Saturday, the 13th, we have our marching band participating in competition at Busch Gardens. We have a scholarship senior night on May 22nd, everyone is invited. We have a JROTC award ceremony on May 24th. The senior walk and picnic is on May 25th. And we will host graduation outside on June 3rd. Graduation begins at 10:00. You also have middle school and elementary school end of year highlights. And at this time, I'm gonna turn this over to our Director of Finance, Mrs. Tara Booth, for updates.
Good evening. Wanted to let you know that in the month of April, we were focused on reimbursements and we received just over $823,000 in reimbursements. We have another $363,000 that we expect in the next seven to 10 days and a little over $200,000 that we expect within the week after that. We do have a focus on filing those reimbursements.
All right, any board members have any questions? Long, you have anything?
The reimbursements, what are they, federal reimbursements?
Yes, sir.
Where does those funds go when they come back?
Straight to the Treasurer's Office.
All right, page 12 of your report. And I've been meaning to talk on this a little bit, then I keep forgetting. You got your five layers of school safety. And the first one being emergency management, staff training, you got your exercises, hardware, software and a positive school culture. And I've talked about this a couple of times. Virginia Department of Emergency Management usually has a contract with the Olson Group. They have some wonderful people that would love to come in this area and do some active threat training. The active threat training goes from preparing, training, exercise, tabletop exercise to a drill in the school. I'm sure the sheriff, I'm not speaking for the sheriff, but Mr. Allen over there would probably love to have some type of training like that to get into the schools to prepare for an active threat. Also, the teachers can participate and at the will of the parents, the students can participate. And I participated participated in a couple of these. And the drills are where for every minute you put in it, it actually will prepare you for such an incident. And I think the best way to prepare for one is to train for one. And I would like to see the school system reach out to VDOT. And actually Chief Balderson could, again, I'll throw him under the bus on that one, could assist with making this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. I'll be happy to reach out to Sheriff Beecham as well as Captain Allen and Chief Chief Middleton.
Balderson, I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
But I think, you know, we're talking about, you know, school safety and, you know, it's about the kids. Let's let's provide these trainings, you know, it's gotta happen.
Absolutely. And we enjoy a very close working relationship with all of our agents, so that should not be a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for the suggestion.
All right, is that all, Mr. Brand?
That's all I got.
Mr. Tomlin? Mr. Jett, do you have anything?
No, sir.
All right. Thank y'all ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Jett. It's great to hear your voice this evening, we've missed you.
Thank you, ma'am, it's good to be heard.
All right, that's all our presentations. Next item on the list is the County Administrator's Report. Ms. Tadlock, I'll let you take over from here.
Yes, sir. For the month of April, we had seven new structures. Total construction cost for the month, 4.7 million. So construction cost year to date, 21 million, approximately 21 million, which is approximately 961,000 above this time last year. Next item I have, I need a motion to approve a supplemental appropriation for the opioid abatement settlement fund in the amount of $38,453.03 to line item 51023200 for fiscal year 23.
All right, much pleasure, Board.
I'll move second.
All right, got a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, you have in your packet some information from Interactive GIS Incorporated. And this is a proposal for the setup and annual maintenance and hosting for web-based GIS system for Northumberland County. The amount is 4,500 and the initial cost, we were looking at using ARCA funding to cover that cost. Then after that, there would be reoccurring maintenance annual cost, which would still be about that, in that range, 4,500 to $5,000.
All right, much pleasure, Board.
How would this help the county?
This would have, not only would we get to that point, we would have internal mapping system for the staff. But eventually what this would do is provide tax maps and mapping services on our webpage for the public.
Other counties have GIS, I've seen specifically in the tax map scenario property. I move that we move forward with this using our fund.
Second.
All right, we got a motion second. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Jett. All right, Ms. Tadlock?
Next item I have is the Department of Health Information. They are requesting last year's figures from fiscal year 22, which was which remained $3,638 be carried over to this fiscal year. I would need, since this is over the amount that the board had budgeted, which was 221,700, I would need the board to approve the increase and do a supplemental appropriation in that amount.
All right, much pleasure, the Board. The Board have any comments on this?
I move that we approve.
What's their rationale for requesting the extra money? Any specific?
They typically, anytime they have any of those monies left over, they'll request that to be. But it wasn't anything specific. We can ask them to come and provide additional information.
Are we gonna get any more services for that extra money?
Don't count on it.
I, we got a motion on this table.
All right, got a motion, I don't have a second yet. No second?
I personally would like to defer it for our regular consideration of the budget.
Is it something that we have to have?
No, only if you choose to move those monies forward. And I can let them know that you choose not to move those monies forward. And we can just sign the contract based off of the original amount.
Be nice to know what it's for. Yeah, that's that, if it was for anything specific, that's one thing, but.
Yeah, well, in the packet, there is an additional chart with the services. But as far as specifically what those monies would be used for, I can get some additional information.
I mean, one problem we always have, there's no, unless they change, there's no local sanitaryian here all the time. They're getting others in and out. For years ago, we used to have at least one sanitaryian there.
Yeah.
Well. Could you have more information by the next, you have another budget meet coming up, right?
We got quite a few more.
We got quite a few more. Yeah, I can try to get that information by the next meeting.
Okay, I will draw.
You withdraw your motion, yes. Mr. Jett, do you have any comments?
No, indeed.
Okay. All right, Ms. Tadlock?
All right, the final thing that I have is the Northern Neck Regional Jail Budget. The jail board did approve the budget on May 3rd. Each locality does need to approve the budget. The total budget is $11,000,2946. And you have that information in your your packet.
All right, much pleasure, Board.
Move that we approve.
All right, I got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion second. Are there any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Tadlock, you have anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, next item would be Board of Supervisors Items. First one would be approval of the check register. Hope everybody's had time to to review the check register.
Yes, I move that we approve.
I got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I got a motion second. Any other comments?
I do want to point out there was an item on there, radio communication, $16,000. And we're gonna get a bill, we know for this month right now.
Yeah.
How many more we gonna get?
Don't know.
No. Can you hear me now, works only so well.
All right, any other comments? Mr. Jett, you have any?
No, sir.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next would be Board Comments and we'll start with Mr. Long.
Yes, Tadlock, I would come along on the school school board building as far as leaks.
For the EVB building, it was just the matters really before the Board of Supervisors as to what you all would like to do. We've gotten the engineer drawings and it's just a matter of finalizing that based off of what the board would like to do, we need to bid that that information out.
Mr. Brand?
Yes, and I was gonna touch on the roof too. You know, if we're gonna keep people in that building, the roof needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
That's no different than than having the school board in the old building with a roof leak. And, you know, I don't know, but I think we need to see what it's gonna cost and have that discussion and look at what it's gonna take to fix this building. But also within that, too, is if you're not gonna stay in that building, we need to look at, do we need to spend that kind of money in that building? What can we build for the same amount of money it would cost to put a roof on it? We need to look at other things such as how much money the county's paying in rent for buildings. And take that money and lump it together and see how much that would go toward a new building. We need to sit down after this budget and come up with some kind of idea, a five-year plan on a county building. We cannot keep relying on the old courthouse to be the county seat. That building needs a lot of repairs itself. And it's time to start looking into these things. You know, we preach about maintaining buildings and and keeping them up, but we got buildings here in the county that's county owned, it's not kept up. They need to be repaired or they need to be replaced. And it's time that we sit down and have those discussions. We need to get through the budget first.
All right, you have anything else, Mr. Brand?
That's all I got.
Mr. Tomlin?
Yes, since Mr. Long and Mr. Brand have brought up about the bank building's roof, I make a motion that we put it out for bids, if nothing else to find out what it is.
Right.
We don't, we don't have to accept it if we, it'll give us some information about making the decision. But we've got to move forward to either fish or cut bait, one way or the other.
Yeah.
And the longer we sit around doing nothing, not catching anything.
All right, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, do I have any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion passes. Anything else, Mr. Tomlin?
Yes, I'd ask the County Administrator to look into, it's called the School Efficiency Review Program. I'll give you this, Mr. Tadlock. It's basically done by the Virginia Department of Planning and Budget. It goes into possible cost savings in non-instructional areas. But you can find out the process costs and stuff like that and present it when you can. Because obviously there's concerns about cost, but this would, again, only this would not by the Code of Virginia and their practices would not affect instructional, but at least the other areas, buildings and things like that. We need to, some efficiency needs to move forward. So just ask the County Administrator to look into that and then present some information about that.
All right. Mr. Jett, you have anything, sir?
No, sir.
All right, I believe everything else has been covered that I had on my list, so I have nothing else. All right, no more of the comments? All right, our next item would be to convene into a closed meeting.
Can we do?
Do we want to do that or we want to wait?
Do it after, because we got a lot of public right here.
We got a lot of public here. All right, our next item would be public comments. Anyone would like to speak tonight? Let's give Morgan a minute to get his sign up sheet. Anyone would like to speak tonight? You can speak on anything that you want except for our items that are on our public hearings tonight. Nobody on there, all right. Thank you, Morgan. All right, I have no one on the public comment sheet that signed up. Would anyone here tonight like to speak on anything? All right, would anyone like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight? How many people on? All right. Anyone like to speak? Speak on public comment tonight? All right. All right, since no one wants to speak, I will close the public hearing, I mean, the public comment period. And we will start on our public hearings. Let's see, Carter, Carter got here yet?
Yeah, he's sitting right by Todd.
Oh, okay, I didn't see you, Carter, I'm sorry. At first, is a is a six-year plan with VDOT. Carter, good to see you.
Good to see you all. All right. Been a while.
It has been a while.
Yes.
You need to, you need to come back a little more often.
I didn't expect this big a crowd, so I just have a few handles. So if you need a handout for the six-year plan, share it, because I don't have enough. Pass them around. Share amongst yourselves. I think I only got about 20 copies. Assuming the board members have a copy of the presentation.
We have a copy.
Good. All right, for the benefit of the people in the audience, my name is Carter White. I'm the Assistant Residency Administrator for the Northern Neck Residency with the Department of Transportation. The Code of Virginia requires us to meet with the Board of Supervisors in a public hearing to formulate a six-year secondary improvement plan and priority list for the secondary improvement budget. I've distributed a copy of the plan and the budget for your consideration regarding this matter. Today's public hearing is being conducted for the 24 through 29 plan in the 2024 fiscal year budget for the secondary system only. It has nothing to do with 360, 201, 202. It's only on the secondary system and it's only for state roads, it's not for private roads. Also, keep in mind, this is for new construction items, typically maintenance items such as cleaning ditches, repaving roadways that are already existing paved, that that's not in relation to this. That's handled through our maintenance budgets. Last month, I think David presented. Last month, I think David presented this plan. We have not made any changes to that plan. So what I'll do is I'll go through the plan. On the first page of the plan, you'll see two sources of funding. First type of funding is, uh, one of, I don't know if it's the first one or the second one, but anyway, the first, first item I'll bring up is the district grant unpaid. This is funding based on a prorate or share of the amount of roads in each county that has fifty cars a day. And these are the, the existing dirt roads. I will say your, your county is, uh, is slowly but surely been reducing the amount of unpaid state dirt roads. We still have some state dirt roads. We no longer take any roads into the system, uh, that are not paved. So these are, most of these are, were developed in the fifties, the forties, and the sixties, and they just, they're just finally getting their turns. The first priority is, is Addy's Point Road. It's from Route six oh five to the end of state maintenance, about forty-one hundredths of a miles long, and anticipated paving it in the summer of 2027. The next item is, we call it county-wide items, and in the older days, we used to have four of these items. And we would carry about two to five thousand and sometimes ten thousand dollars on those particular items. What we've, and I'm pretty sure David mentioned it to you, that we're going to be combining those into just one item. Uh, and typically we care about twenty-five thousand dollars. And those things include seeding and fertilization, minor surveying that we need to do, sometimes some minor courthouse research and, and that sort of thing. The last item on the plan is, is a future unpaid road funds. And these are typically in the last four years of the plan. Basically, it's a placeholder for the funds that, that you have to use. And I forgot to mention it, the district unpaid grant funds have to be used on unpaid roads. So it's typically the placeholder for those out years, and that is the plan. And I will turn it back over to the board and to the public.
All right, any board members have any comments for, questions for Mr. White?
Only question I have for you, Carter, is possibly if you have any idea, in the district grants unpaid in fiscal year 2025, it went, twenty twenty-four was thirty-eight hundred more or less to ninety-four hundred. And then drops back down to twenty-six hundred.
I'll be quite honest with you, I don't know the answer.
All right, to me, that makes no real good sense.
It doesn't, but I'm sure there's some reason and I'd have to get back to you.
Some budget language in some bill somewhere.
Possibly, but I'll get, I can try to find an answer.
Don't waste your time, Carter. It's not, I was just curious.
It wasn't just, all the counties were like that.
Okay.
All, all five of them.
Apparently somewhere in the budget to get specified something, but don't take your time.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Mr. Jett, you have any questions?
No, Richard, I don't have any, thank you.
All right. Carter, we don't have any more questions, but we'll open the public hearing here. All right, we'll open the public hearing on our six-year plan. Have no one on the sign-up sheet that wants to speak? Would anybody like to speak on the six-year plan tonight? Anybody like to speak on the six-year plan? All right, would anybody in the virtual world like to speak on the six-year plan? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak on the six-year plan? All right, I will close the public hearing and the matters before the board. It's a pleasure, the board.
With the chairman, I move that we approve the plan and approve the resolution that was part of our package.
All right, I got a motion to second. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Carter, you got, you got it.
Todd, take care of you earlier.
Yes, yes, Todd, you did a good job.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Thank you. All right, next item tonight would be a revision to our Northumberland County Vacation Home Rental Ordinance. Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, sir. Uh, up for consideration is a revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance to require a conditional use permit for a vacation home rental on property zoned R-three residential restricted. At the April twentieth planning commission meeting, the planning commission recommended unanimously require a conditional use permit for vacation home rentals in the R-three residential restricted zoning district. There's no new language going to be added to the zoning ordinance because we already defined vacation, vacation home rental. But the usage table will be modified, uh, if, if you all consider, uh, go ahead and do, and approve this, would be a conditional use in the R-three category. And it's already in the usage table, vacation home rentals are already in the usage table. We basically be just changing the usage table, uh, for a conditional use for vacation home rentals in R-three.
All right, thank you. The board have any comments or questions for Mr. McKenzie before we open the public hearing? Mr. Jett, you don't have anything?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing. The first item on our sign-up sheet would be Duncan Pinney. Going to switch, okay.
Hello, Charlotte Pence, eighty-one Jacobs Lane, Reville, and I didn't prepare anything, you're welcome. But I think we've already communicated everything that we need to say or feel very strongly about. We appreciate your consideration of this. And the items that we recommend, recommended to you, we know not all of them, hopefully some of them will be selected to go with the CUP as conditions. And I would like to ask, I know Mr. Gregory said at one point that it is possibility to not grandfather the existing vacation home rentals that are in the sub, three subdivisions. But I'd like to emphasize that more if at all possible, if that can be done. And thank you all for everything you do.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
My name's Duncan Pence, and I'll also support the CUP, the conditional use permit. And the only other thing I have to say is thank you for your attention to this matter. It really means a lot to, I know, the three subdivisions, our three districts. And also that, uh, if it can be done, we would ask that no one be grandfathered in. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next person would be Lorraine Trace, yeah, Trace. Almost thought that was the L.
Lorraine Trace, twenty-nine Washington Drive, Reedville, Chesapeake Beach Estates. I do also appreciate your attention to this matter and the planning committee for all the time that they put into this with us. We've been talking to them for months now. One thing that has come up about this is the short-term rental people say that they bring money into the county. But the county doesn't get anything out of this. The only thing that they do bring is some business affiliations. But we, the people that are here all the time, do the same thing, so I don't see where it's helping anything at all. But anyway, I do appreciate your time and hope you will consider this, and no grandfathering, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Woody Trace? Doesn't want to speak? All right, okay. All right, the next one would be Chris. I guess that would be Huck, Huckso? Huckso.
My name is Chris Hutchgo. I live at fifth nine Davis Drive with my wife, Mary Lavender. I have a page I like to read, it was an email I sent, please. Okay, me and my wife, we strongly support the CUP proposed for the R-three SCRs with the recommendations set forth for the permit. We are requesting the following to be added to the CUP permit requirements. SCR owners in the R-three community should be mandated to inform their clients what facilities are not available for the STR renters' use. In the community of Chesapeake Beach Estates, there are SCR owners who are falsely advertising on their Airbnb sites that the SCR renters are permitted to use the private beach and other facilities and amenities. It is written in Chesapeake Beach community bylaws that the use of the beach is for members only. This is a public safety issue. SCR renters are falsely led to believe that they will have access to the beach. Potentially, this can and will lead to confrontation between the short-term renters and the homeowners of the community when the renters become aware that they are not permitted on the beach after being under the impression that they are coming here for a beach vacation, only to find out they've been misled by the STR owners. And add to the fact that there is likely to have the use of alcohol, which would intensify the situation. In addition, we recommend that the current SCR owners not be grandfathered in, and they should be required to follow the proposed CUP requirements. I do have two advertisements on the STRs that state that they could use the beach. If you want a copy of that, I can leave it here.
Yes, sir, if you want, you want to give it to us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
All right, our next person on the sign-up sheet is Laura McWilliam.
Good evening, my name is Laura McMillan, and I am opposed to the conditional use permit. I am one of the-
Will you speak into the microphone a little more?
Sorry, is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I am one of the short-term owners, and I sent a lengthy email to Mr. McKenzie about our deed, our permit, the land survey, and access to the beach when we purchased our home. We purchased our home with deeded access, property rights to the beach. And then the land was surveyed last year, and it was stated that the lot sixteen was only about five feet belonging to Chesapeake Beach Estates Civic Association, which is a voluntary civic association, it's not an HOA. And these bylaws that they're speaking about, voluntary, they decided to make it mandatory for all of the residents to participate and follow the rules and regulations of the bylaws, and they're not an HOA, voluntary civic association. I also sent that to Mr. McKenzie. I'm a very responsible short-term rental owner. I have not received any complaints from my immediate neighbors. The only issue that happened at my house was when some of the residents that live in the neighborhood egged my guest car. And the sheriff was called out and a report was made. The second incident was when we were being harassed by neighbors, my kid and I. But other than that, we don't cause any trouble. I rented my house out to fourteen families for a total of thirty nights for the whole summer, well, actually for the whole year of 2022. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person on our list is John Forster.
Good evening, good evening. My name is John Forster, and I also live in Chesapeake Beach Estates. Or I own a vacation home there, excuse me, uh, one one seven Beach Road. At the planning commission hearing on April twentieth concerning short-term rentals and R-three zoning, two points were well-supported. Number one, STRs are a major economic benefit to Hotel Limited, Northumberland County. And two, that the short-term rentals that are currently operating in R-three zoned Chesapeake Bay Estates are being operated in a professional, neighbor-friendly manner. There is no problem that needs fixing from a zoning or regulatory view, in, in my opinion. At the hearing, there were a lot of questions about how this CUP would be implemented, and I list a few here for you, not that I have an answer or an opinion, but just that these are some things that you're going to have to think about, I think. And they are. Is it fair to target the regulation of short-term rentals only in R-three zoned areas when there is no evidence of a specific need to do so? Two, is it appropriate for the county to establish specific regulations of permits for less, for I think there's only ten short-term rentals currently operating in the R-three districts right now? I could be wrong on that, but that's just, that's a guess on my part. What criteria will the county use to determine if a permit should be issued? Couple of previous speakers indicated that you are working on that list. And, and yet, at the planning commission meeting, the, I believe we were told that, that all the existing short-term rentals would be permitted to continue operation because they weren't creating any problems. That was what we were told. But obviously, there are other members of the community who don't want us grandfathered in, which, you know, I don't think is fair. Would the proposed use permit belong to the owner or the property? Just that that was never answered. If the short-term, if short-term rentals need additional regulation, why is the county not regulating all short-term rentals in the county? Why focus on just R-three zone, uh, zones? If there are, if there are public safety concerns, why focus only on some of the short-term rentals in the county? They should all be looked at if that's a problem. Likewise, why not require permit for all residential rentals, short or long term? Why target just the short-term rentals? So therefore, are these, are these regulations discriminatory in the way they are currently targeted? I don't know, but I ask you to consider that. Isn't the issue of irresponsible neighbors a more general problem best managed by public safety officers rather than, um, a zoning issue? Short-term rental owners are typically very responsible owners who are investing in their property and the neighborhood and providing a valuable service to the community. Our guests pay local hospitality taxes and leave with a very positive experience of Northumberland County. Therefore, I'm opposed to creating a requirement for a conditional use permit for a vacation home rental on property zoned R-three residential restricted. I'm not opposed, however, to a registration process for all short-term rentals in the county so that the government confirm, can confirm payment of hospitality taxes and can be aware of the location and number of these properties. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet, but would anyone else like to speak tonight? Anyone else like to speak? All right, anybody in the virtual world would like to speak?
Yes, please. Sorry.
Hello?
Um, yes. This is Dave Miller. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes. What, what was your name again?
Dave Miller, um, sixty-three Julian Street, um, Clayton Beach.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The gentleman that just spoke said that, um, they had not had any problems with STRs in the R-three communities. I, I know of a, a lot of our neighbors that have had a lot of problems, whether it be, um, people on the beach arguing, you know, with residents and telling our kids that they can't be on the beach even though they live here. Whether it be them going on private property and using the private property and refusing to leave. There, there's just a whole list of things that have happened here. So there have been problems. So there have been problems. Also, the reason for the R3 request is the small size of the lots, and in our case, we have a beach that's 180 feet long, and there are 80 homeowners, and we all know how to share it. But then, when 15 people show up in a two-bedroom STR and camp out with a cabana on the beach and no one knows who they are or who to talk to or where they came from, there just are things that need to be regulated, and we have no way of doing it. So we rely on the county to help us. So thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the virtual world would like to speak tonight?
Yes, my name is Kim Bivins.
Yes, ma'am.
It's B.I.V.I.N.S., and we live at 165 Parker Road in Chesapeake Beach Estates. My husband's family has had a property in that, in that subdivision for more than 60 years, and I'd like to reiterate my support for the conditional use permit, my support for no grandfathering in. I shared the mail with Mr. McKenzie, and I know he forwarded it on to the Board of Supervisors and all the other appropriate individuals to take a look at some suggestions for the CUP. As was previously stated, the reason R3 is being, I guess some people would say targeted is because of small lot size. Additionally, there were some comments about egging of a vehicle and some other things that happened in the neighborhood, and we did reach out. Law enforcement was called, and to my knowledge, the Ring camera video has never been turned over to the investigator who came and asked for it multiple times. So while I understand that, you know, neighbors need to get along with neighbors, we have some similar situations to what was previously mentioned happening in the neighborhood, and I have no problem with Airbnbs. I do have a problem with people advertising beach access. Our civic association is indeed voluntary. We own the properties that have been outlined. The bylaws that have been passed by the majority of our club apply to everyone simply because we own those properties. We pay taxes on them, and we pay insurance on them. So at the end of the day, I appreciate your consideration. I appreciate the fact that you're listening to us and that Mr. McKenzie and the Planning Commission have been working with us to try to create a safe environment for everyone. We want the, the folks that come to use the short-term rentals, if they're in our neighborhood, to be safe. And I'm not suggesting that the STR owners in our neighborhood aren't safe, but there should be some level of control over how many people stay in a home versus the number of bedrooms that are in the home versus the number of parking spaces that are available, and that list goes on and on. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Heidi Hessler Allen. Yes, sir, my name is Heidi Hessler Allen. I'm at 114 Fletcher Road. Thank you. I would respectfully ask that you do not grandfather the STR owners into the CUP order. Please require safety inspections for all STRs in the R3 zone. One of our concerns was retaliation, and we have already encountered questionable behavior. After the last meeting, one of our neighbors verbally assaulted by three STR owners right after the meeting in that very parking lot, and two of them found this very funny. I would like to further agree with Mr. Forster in saying that all rentals should be under a CUP. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak in the virtual world?
Yes, my name is Bill Glasscock. I'm with Fleeton Beach. I live at 56 Lemming Avenue in Reville, Virginia. I'd like to thank the board for considering conditional use permits for our three communities. We're asking you to help protect the character of these established residential communities, and these are businesses that are inside of high-density residential communities that are established. I support the CUP in our three districts and ask for no grandfathering of existing vacation rental homes. Thank you for your service to the county and for our communities. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak tonight? No one else? All right. Since we don't have anyone else that wants to speak, I will close the public hearing, and the matter is before the board. Mr. Plasch, to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make vacation home rentals in R3 a conditional use permit.
All right, I have a motion to have second.
Second.
Have a motion to second. All right, are there any other comments?
R3 by its pure definition is lots that existed prior to September the 1st, 1974, prior to our zoning. As been mentioned, it was and is for lots that are very small, which would never be allowed today. Any lots have to be at least, say, R2 or A1 have to be at least an acre in size. Obviously, we are charged with balancing the rights of an individual landowner versus the rights of other individual landowners in a group. I can't get into the legal issue of grandfathering. That would have to come from our county attorney or the interpretation bylaws or restrictive covenants. That's outside the purview of this board. But it is not too much to ask, in my opinion, because this is a, not a pure residential use. This is some commercial. There's some money being made here, and I'm not even worried about the county piece. But this is, and the restrictive covenant that says for commercial owner, unless you have specific language, what is the Scott case, Mr. Gregory? That said, short-term rentals, you have to have, to be barred, has to have specific language or something. There's some case of Supreme Court of Virginia said has to have specific language. Normal, general commercial use doesn't prevent it.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
There is some US, I mean, Virginia Supreme Court case that said general commercial use does not bar short-term rentals. It has to be a specific, the language has to be very, very specific. Yes, yeah. So any language, any deed restrictions that says commercial use, no commercial use, that language by itself would not bar it. And I'm not saying the county should override that piece, but I've, there obviously have been some conflicts, and I remember this board actually had a ordinance that there had to be short-term rental requirements previously, but the majority decided to go against that. And one reason, they had a subdivision, and it was large lot subdivision, not a small one. And you had some gentlemen, and I'll put that in quotes, on a pub, on the public dock, they decided to go swimming. Well, they had no bathing suits, so they went all natural. And needlessly, in a residential subdivision with families and everybody else, that's not the appropriate thing. And that's where we're trying to avoid. Now, again, small resident, small beach lots, I, we're not going to address that unless the county attorney says that. So, but I think this is to try to help, one, keep the sheriff from having to get involved. Because when the sheriff comes in, that, one, it can raise the stakes all over for everybody. And the response times the sheriff, because he may be dealing with something a whole lot more. Like, one day, we had that one sinking of the boat, they had a hostage situation down that same way. So in a priority, I'd rather have the sheriff not dealing with this, but more important stuff to your individual landowners. I'm not saying it's not important. But my father was a survey, and I've seen people argue over six inches of land. So people will argue over any right they think they have, whether they have it or not. But I support, and I say reasonable restrictions now. I'm not going to say no, because they are entitled to use the property reasonably, does not interfere excessively with the neighbors. Because one thing, this person rents their property house, this person who does not, they have no trespassing rights on that person, and that's where you can enforce it yourselves. You can put no trespassing. So if this short-term rental guest comes on your property and you've got the appropriate notice, trespassing can come in. So it's up to individuals sometimes to enforce their own rights. But these, Chesapeake Beach, Fleeton Beach, since I'm on the rescue squad, I know there because been there many times, they're small lots. And the situation is the houses are tight. Zoning, one reason why you have zoning is because you don't want houses too close together to cause a fire. Because they're too close together, they, one can burn down the line. But I do support this to try to hopefully address the issue in these subdivision, and whether it's needed elsewhere, it's not discriminatory, because there is a difference. Yeah, all right. And in that motion, I include this motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices pursuant to the body's statutory authority. Again, to try to calm things down, but I also, if we get a request for one, I'm going to balance the right of the property owner to rent their property, but also to try to keep things going on. I respect an individual property. My property is my property. You can't come on it without my permission. But the other thing is, if I want to rent it to somebody else, that's my right, but I don't have a right to interfere with my neighbor excessively. The old saying, you can do anything in the United States you want to do as long as you don't impact on somebody else. These short-term rentals are starting to impact on other people's rights. That's my motion, including the language that's quoted by the county attorney.
All right, we got a motion second. Any other comments? Mr. Jett, you have any comments?
No, sir.
All right, since there's no other comments, all those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any, all those again, say nay? All right, let's make sure. All right, motion passes. Thank y'all, ladies and gentlemen. We have no more public hearings tonight. Only thing we have left on our agenda would be a closed meeting. Thank y'all for coming.
Mr. Chairman, you want to take a short recess? We're getting ready.
Yeah.
Or do you want me to read the motion? Because you're getting ready.
Take a recess.
Let's take, let's just take a recess. Come on, Mr. Long, we get to meeting over.
He want to rush you now.
You get long-winded on if you don't watch it.
I think it calls for a couple laps after this meeting.
I got excuse. All right. I will entertain a motion to convene and to close the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing before we go to closed meeting. I would ask the county staff in conjunction with the county attorney to look into the process of registration of short-term rentals. Not to act on it, but with just to brief us about what we can do, what we should, what the legal steps would be, and then the implications of that.
All right, okay.
And I can make that in a motion if you want it.
Whichever way you want to do it.
Just, just as for your information, Ronnie jumped off because he thought we were going into closed meeting, so he's, he's not on currently, just, just for your information.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
I'll make that in a formal motion, then, just that the county staff, in conjunction with the county attorney, look into the registration process and what we do along those lines as far as short-term rentals, to present to us at the next meeting for possible action or not.
All right, I have a motion to have second.
I'll second it.
I got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jett is absent right at the time. All right, Mr. Tadlock, you have some language for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 3711a1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Section 2.2, 3711a29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, or discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary of the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and county attorney, as they are deemed necessary, and the presence will be reasonably he, the board and its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia for your section 2.2, 3712.
All right, do I have a motion? Have second? I got a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are in closed meeting now. I guess we'll go to the next room.
Need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call, wrote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convening, the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
So move what Mr. Tadlock said.
All right, I got a motion to have second.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jett. All right. Roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Brand.
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin.
Aye, aye, aye.
Mr. Jett?
Aye.
Mr. Haney, aye. Aye. We had a closed meeting now. What action do you need, Mr.?
The board would like to take action on the two contracts regarding waste management and right-way recycling, recycling portion of that.
Do you want it individually or together?
Individually.
I move we approve the waste management contract based upon what we presented.
I got a motion to second. Any other discussion?
Like it to be lower and more responsive, but we don't have a lot of choice here.
That's because they clean up on the outside.
Yeah, right. They clean up on the inside of us, too.
Yeah. All right, no other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next motion.
I move that we would approve the recycling bid that was had with right-way recycling or whatever they are.
For the recycling at the site.
All right. I got a motion, have second? All right, have second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 What else you have, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have.
All right, when do you want to set the next meeting date?
17. 5 o'clock.
On the budget calendar, I had May 17 at 5 o'clock.
Right.
If that's convenient for everybody.
May 17, 5 o'clock.
That'll work. Yeah. I got a DSS meeting at 3, but I'll be through by then, no problem. And if not, I'll come over here.
All right.
Is, is 5 o'clock, okay?
Yeah, 5 o'clock, fine.
All right, so we're going to be all right? In fact, do we need to do anything else on any others, or? All right.
I would just, let's go with that one for right now, and we can discuss any others that we need.
Okay, May 17, 5 o'clock. All right, now, got any other business?
They will, they have it in.
Got any other?
I don't have anything else.
All right, well, I entertain a motion to carry over to May 17th at five, five P M.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank everybody for coming. Hey, Ronnie?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank y'all for letting me, allowing me to do this. It really meant a lot.
Yeah, we, we are glad to have you back here.
All right, well, thank y'all. We'll talk to you later.
All right, take care.